It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 20th, Noblesville Common Council Meeting to order. With that, Mr. Mayor, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Leece, would you do the roll call?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Here.
Mr. Eyre.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the November 12th Common Council Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Petition or comments by citizens who are present. I have one from the Indiana Association of Firefighters. Mr. Murray, would you like to wait until the item comes up? Do you want to sit through this whole meeting?
We have a guest here this evening I'd like to call up, Ms. Laura Alderding with the, she's with the co-chair of the Hamlin County GOP Club. Mayor, I'd like for you to stay, please.
Mayor, since we didn't get to see you on November 13th because of your surgery, we did have something to give you that evening, so I brought it with me tonight so we could present it to you.
Well, thank you very much. I don't like to miss many parties, so. Oh, that's beautiful.
On behalf of the Noblesville GOP Club, I'm presenting with this personal remembrance of yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for all you do for the city, and hopefully you'll have a very relaxing next chapter.
You'll be seeing me, so. I'm not going anywhere. All right, thank you very much.
While I'm here, we also wanted to thank Rick Taker for your service and.
Thank you very much.
And I forgot mine the other night, so thank you so much. Takes the village. Thank you, Laura.
So what about Rick and, I was gonna say Rick and the mayor and Laura.
No, sorry, just get one with Rick here. I had mine the other night.
We'll do another one, actually, if we can, with you.
Oh, okay.
Get in the picture.
Pardon?
Get in the picture, please.
Thank you, Megan.
Not as good as Rutter. Thank you.
I only have a five, 10-minute. Mayor, though I don't really.
A little surprised tonight, so.
Mayor, report to council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again. I appreciate it. Congratulations, obviously, Rick and Chris, and it's been a great, great effort. We have had, I've done a little more than this, but all I've got written down is ribbon cutting at the Ford Garage, and that's an infill, well, it was where Moe's was at Town Center, really cool restaurant. I was a little jealous as I cut the ribbon. The head sandwich is the Mayor, Chris Jensen, special. But I got a ballroom, you got a hamburger, but it's, no. But I, it is a very, very nice place. This is the first one in Indiana, so it's nice to, you know, kind of set that mark for the city of Noblesville. And then a reminder, the tree lighting is Saturday night, Judicial Center, and that's always a good evening. Kids really love that evening. So that's all I have in my report. Are there any questions of me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council committee reports.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
So the Finance Committee met on Thursday, November 21st, and much of our agenda, as it has been the last several council meetings, is much of the agenda tonight was discussed in the Finance Committee, so I'm not going to repeat myself. But I will say that the claims come to you with an approval and recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Any other committee reports? With that, we'll move on. Approval of claims.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Previously discussed ordinance, council consider ordinance 47-11-19 an ordinance approving additional appropriations from the Downtown Development Fund for design work at Seminary Park. Mr. Spalding.
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, City Controller, and this is the first of three similar items that are all on second reading, so they have all been previously presented to you folks. And again, this one is just addressing an issue where funds had been appropriated for a purpose in the previous year. Those funds lapsed, kind of came to light that they were still needed in the current year, and so this is an action to reappropriate those funds this year for that intended purpose.
Any questions of Mr. Spalding? With that, I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance 47-11-19.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing on ordinance 47-11-19.
Second.
Excuse me. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. There should be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 47-11-19 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 47-11-19. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Leece.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Council consider ordinance 41-48-11-19 an ordinance approving additional appropriation from the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, MVH Fund, for the Pleasant Street Design Phase Two. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, another example of a second reading item that has, you know, been previously presented. Again, what's different here is it's a different fund, it's the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund, and this is to actually appropriate money for some planned upcoming expenditures related to transportation investments in the city.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding? With that, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance 47-11-19.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
Seeing no one come forward for the public hearing, I would make a motion that we close it.
Second.
Been moved to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 48-11-19 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 48-11-19 as amended. Ms. Leece? Ms. Leece, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles. Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council consider ordinance 49-11-19 an ordinance approving additional appropriations from the Downtown Development Fund for replacement of lights in downtown Noblesville. Mr. Spalding.
Again, the last of the three, again, second reading item, something previously presented, and again, additional appropriation for some planned expenditures for investments in infrastructure in downtown Noblesville.
Any questions, Mr. Spalding? With that, I would like to open the public hearing for ordinance 49-11-19.
President.
Mr. Boyce.
Seeing no public coming forward for public hearing, ordinance 49-11-19, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance 49-11-19. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 49-11-19 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 49-11-19. Did you say as amended?
As presented.
As presented, okay. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Leece.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance is adopted.
New ordinances for discussion. Council consider ordinance 41-10-19A an ordinance amending ordinance 41-10-19, the 2020 salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville. Ms. Ramon.
Motion to introduce.
Second. Good evening. The first thing I'm sure you noticed was the new format of the salary ordinance. It is no longer grouped by department, but by job classifications, which include appointed positions, full-time civilian, part-time seasonal civilian, and sworn, public safety sworn positions. Also on this ordinance, each position is now listed with a maximum bi-weekly salary next to each position, and the FLSA status is also listed. This format really modernizes the salary ordinance, and I believe it, you know, gives a better overview of all the authorized positions within the city. The salary ordinance before you does contain the same positions and salaries that were approved at our last meeting on October 29th, with a few exceptions, and those are indicated by an X on the ordinance and outlined in my letter are the outline of those changes. It is important to note that although there are changes, no additional funding is required for these changes. The approved 2020 budget already has the funding appropriated for these requests. Therefore, I respectfully request that the ordinance be approved on first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or I can review the changes that are outlined in my attached letter.
Any questions, Ms. Ramon?
Um.
Mr. Johnson.
I've had some people ask about personnel titles and all that kind of stuff, and if it's okay with Hawley, I would recommend we do not pass it on first read. It's only a week till the next meeting, and it would give the public, as far as being open and transparent, it'd give the public plenty of time to ask any questions. I don't know how important it is it has to be on the first read or not, Hawley.
It's requested due to the, our initiative to try to get people hired. We have people, you know, wanting to get started and new hire paperwork, you know, it's all pending upon the approval
Yeah.
of the salary ordinance.
I just had several people that have asked me about new positions and where's the money coming from, and the money was always in the budget, we know that. But some of the new titles and stuff weren't necessarily there, and I think, I don't know, my personal opinion is that if, if we want to really show some transparency and stuff, we wait till the next meeting. And since the next meeting's only a week away, I don't know if that creates hardship for you or not. You know, if anybody else has any other comments or thoughts?
Well, I mean, the only comment and thought I have is that it's taking unanimous about to pass on first read, so.
Yeah, and that's why I didn't want to get there yet until we talk about it.
Mr. Jensen.
Mr. President, and Mr. Johnson, I appreciate your comments there. I see your perspective on that. I also would note that these positions, any changes of them, have already been laid out by the incoming administration, which I know I'm talking about myself. But we, those have been laid out, actually, for several weeks, and vetted, you know, both on social media and within the paper as well. So I know there are some changes in titles. I think the main question was, we came down to funding, and knowing that this is a revenue-neutral change, it's simply a reallocation of dollars. I think that's one of the most important perspectives, so I would urge this council to pass on first reading because of the perspective of HR and hiring, but I recognize your concerns. I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Yeah, and it's not really me, because we've known kind of what's going on. I think it's more, I wanted to make sure that the public doesn't look like we're trying to skirt something through on them or something.
Sure.
I agree with you, because it's been fairly obvious what's coming.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess, I'm open, I guess, to.
Mr. President. I just have one comment, too. We are only a week away to our next meeting, and two of those days, the offices are closed anyway. So I want to ask you, could you, can really much be accomplished tomorrow and Monday would be really, if this is passed tonight?
I would like to think our government can do some work in two days. I know that's quite shocking to some people, but, you know, in defense of HR, I don't think she would ask for it if it was just a completely necessary request.
Well, I was just saying, in light of the holiday,
Right.
is this, are we pushing something through that's not going to get done anyway?
Yes. I do feel, Mr. Hampton, it would get done, yes. I mean, everything's prepared, ready to go, it's just waiting for the, the green light from all of you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Wiles.
I can anticipate that from an HR perspective, you've got offer letters that you want to be able to present to candidates who then need to be able to accept that and give their current employers plenty of time. And I think the sooner that we can be moving on those things and giving that information to those potential new employees, the better. So with that, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass this on first reading.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
President.
Mr. Johnson.
Quick question. Will letters be going out during those couple of days?
Emails, yes.
Emails, okay.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 41-10-19A on first reading. This will be a hand vote, and it takes unanimous to suspend the rules. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero.
President.
Ms. Wiles.
I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance number 41-10-19A as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 41-10-19A. Ms. Leece, this will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance passes. Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance 50-11-19 an ordinance approving additional appropriation from the Downtown Development Fund for light refurbishing of downtown Noblesville and establish a public hearing. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, council, I'm going to have Sam Barris cover the last few articles.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, as Jeff said, Sam Barris, OFA staff. This newly introduced ordinance appropriates an additional $35,000 from the Downtown Development Fund in 2019. This is happening in tandem with a transfer resolution that you're going to hear about a little bit later. In conjunction, these two, the ordinance and the transfer later represent an effort to align appropriation authority with spending out of the Downtown Development Fund. So I can get into the transfer in more detail when we discuss that item. In this case, it's important to know that, to this point in the year, spending out of the Downtown Development Fund has not yet exceeded the existing appropriation authority that's been granted by the council. However, with projects that are in the pipeline that we know there's going to be spending on before the end of the year, this ordinance is needed in order to make sure there's enough appropriation authority from the fund to cover the spending that we know is going to happen. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President.
Ms. Leece.
We kind of got caught up in talking, and it hasn't been introduced yet.
Motion introduced.
Oh, my mistake, yeah.
Actually, it was our mistake. You're good.
I'll share the blame. Happy to do that.
Okay.
Any questions?
Now, any questions?
Any questions? We'll see you next week, on Tuesday.
Mr. President, need to establish a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion? Are you making that motion?
I can make the motion, establish a public hearing for ordinance fifty dash eleven dash nineteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing on five zero dash eleven dash nineteen. That public hearing will be held on December seventeenth. So, Sam, I will not, we will not see, well, we probably will see you next week, but not for that. This is a Mr. Howard one, that's about a page and a half long. Counsel to consider-
Mr. President?
Yes?
We need to vote on establishing the public hearing.
We do. I was, I was working on that.
Yeah, because you just wouldn't have-
It's been moved to establish a public hearing on ordinance five zero dash one one dash nineteen. This will be a hand vote.
I had to think through-
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. All right. You want to read this, Mr.? Counsel to consider ordinance five one dash one one dash nineteen, an ordinance concerning refunding by the city of Noblesville its sewage work revenue bonds of two thousand eleven, authorizing the issuance of sewage works refunding revenue bonds for such purpose, providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of the sewage works, and the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of the sewage works refunding revenue bonds authorized herein. Other matters connected therewith, the repealing ordinance inconsistent, and repealing ordinance inconsistent herewith. Mr. Howard?
Motion introduced.
And moved and introduced.
Second.
Thank you. In two thousand nine, the city issued Sewers Works Revenue Bonds in approximately amount of twelve million dollars. I believe that was for the tank, wasn't it? For one of those things, the big underground tank, and some other improvements at sewage treatment plant. Those bonds, we have an opportunity to refund those bonds at some substantial savings. In your packet, I provided you a, an estimate that the savings through two thousand and thirty, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty, not, two thousand thirty, would be approximately one point six million dollars. Since that time, Baker Tilly, again formerly known as Unball, has run some additional figures, and our underwriters have looked at a more creative opportunity to refund these bonds with tax-exempt bonds versus taxable bonds, and that's about, that would take about ten times longer to explain than reading the title of the ordinance. But we do have very qualified financial people involved, and we believe that the, there's a chance of doing a locking, a tax-exempt interest rate sixteen months in advance, and then contracting to sell the bonds in April of two thousand twenty-one could realize, could pump that savings up to somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a half million dollars. The, this is revenue neutral, the debt payments will be less than the payments on the bonds, and that gross savings would be estimated at two point five. I could answer any questions of the wherethas and whatfor, as Ms. Wiles pointed out in the Finance Subcommittee. Essentially, that's the nuts and bolts of it. This ordinance, as written, would allow us to do either a traditional taxable advance refunding, or to look at the tax-exempt forward refunding. We are also asking to suspend the rules, and the people who are working on this project will be working Friday and Monday, and they are not government employees, and we would like, we have the one large purchaser, that if we do the, lock the interest rate forward, we're going to be well over two million dollars in gross savings. So with that, I'll answer any questions. I've also been cross-examined extensively by Mr. O'Connor on this process, and he seemed satisfied, but I'll answer any, his additional questions if I can.
No additional questions. I just make a comment, given the fact we've been good financial stewards. We'll continue to amortize these bonds under the old rates until we get to two thousand twenty-one, when they refund, but the ultimate savings here is ginormous compared to doing a taxable refunding, and I won't go into all the reasons why, but it's, it's a very advantageous thing for us to do, and we have the wherewithal to make these payments at the old rates to get to that point. So, kudos to Ray and his people, and the way we've managed the utility. We have the, we have the wherewithal to do it. Other communities might not be as fortunate, so, great thing to do for the taxpayers, and the market's going to allow us to do it, so I would say we should move forward.
And I want to jump in on the complimenting the council and the administration. The reason we are able to get these interest rates is because of the stewardship, the UR, the cash balances that are there, the, the credit rating that we have, the ability to have coverage and extra revenue over and above debt service on our projects, and this allows us to continue to provide infrastructure for this rapidly growing community, and kudos to everyone on the council.
Any questions, Mr. Howard? So you're not going to read us this forty-five hundred-page book?
No, I've read it twice, and I stayed awake.
Why you did it?
Well, not in between the two readings. I took a nap, and that will be, yes.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on first reading ordinance number fifty-one dash eleven dash nineteen.
Second.
And pass on first reading ordinance fifty-one dash eleven dash nineteen. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor? Motion carries nine zero.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number fifty-one dash eleven dash nineteen as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance fifty-one dash eleven dash nineteen. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Jensen?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Nine zero, the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Miscellaneous number one, council to consider approval of the two thousand twenty agreement between City of Noblesville and the Firefighters Local four four one six. Mr. Cook?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. You have the agreement in front of you, and I'm not going to go through all of the changes. Most of them were housekeeping updates that we had to complete, but I did want to point out briefly, some of the changes on page eleven, you may have noted, some of the regular hourly rates, if you'd done the math, some of the numbers don't add up to exactly the four percent that we had requested and passed through budget for two thousand twenty for cost-of-living adjustment. We worked with Local forty-four sixteen to achieve a rank restructuring, a pay, I should say, differentiation between the ranks, to be able to achieve that, and through their cooperation and effort, we were able to do that, so thank you very much. We also did have an increase of five hundred dollars for the technical pay that you'll see the bottom of page eleven. This is comparable to other fire departments, and it was part of the two thousand twenty budget for the fire department, and help us assist in recruiting and retention of those positions. And last but not least, on page twelve here, the ambulance incentive, which we add for an additional dollar, one dollar per hour on the base pay for the hours worked for firefighters covering ambulance duty, which is, of course, has a higher run and workload. We felt this was necessary, still comes in either at or below our neighbors to the, to the south. And I'm happy to open up to any other additional questions.
Any questions, Mr. Cook? Mr. Taylor, I'm sure you went over this.
I don't have any questions for Mr. Cook. I think it's a fair agreement for, for the city and for the residents of Noblesville, and we look forward to passing this.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
That was a motion.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have a request.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. I have a request to speak from the Indiana Association of Firefighters Local four four one six. Mr. Murray, if you state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Tony Murray, excuse me, president of Local forty-four sixteen, with offices at three ninety-nine South Fourteenth Street here in Noblesville, and a proud Noblesville firefighter and paramedic. I know brevity is always looked upon with a smile, so I really wanted to approach this and say thank you for, one, to thank you for your continued commitment, two, public safety. We approached this meet-and-confer process with a header on our proposals that say, "Working in partnership for a safe city," and we really look forward to healthy discussions, and this year, we really, as in many years past, have had very healthy and deliberate conversations about what we're doing and how we provide service to our citizens and visitors in this community. So, in addition to thanking you for your support, I'd like to thank Mayor Ditzler for his support and for his staff's support. Like I said, we do come to this table with the citizens in mind when we craft these, the articles that we abide by to provide a service. So I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Murray?
And appreciate your support and passage of the agreement, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving to you.
Do I have a motion?
Second on the table.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve. Were we at to transfer two thousand twenty agreement? No, miscellaneous, two thousand twenty agreement with Firefighters Local four four one six. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Abstain.
Motion carries eight with one abstention. Miscellaneous number two-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel-
To hear an overview of the two thousand twenty wastewater utility budget, Mr. Thompson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
In front of you is the utility budget for two thousand twenty, and it's an interesting year. You'll see a lot of percentages that jump all over the place. That was us getting used to the new chart of accounts. I believe we're getting there and just about have it dialed in, but for the most part, we're looking at about a three and a half percent increase in the budget this year. Our one hundred series was pretty much the wages and benefits. Everything's been included in that in the past salary ordinance. The Board of Works, which was normally an account three ninety point two hundred, was moved to the one hundred series of the treatment plant under the admin column. And really not a whole lot of changes, other than the changes in wages and benefits. We do have an employee that's retiring this spring, so we put a little bit in for him, for his sick time payout. And then, one of the major changes was the moving of three stormwater employees from stormwater to engineering in that same three ninety point two hundred account. So that's why you see a decrease in stormwater, and then an increase in the engineering into three ninety point two hundred. The one, the two hundred series, we did pretty much have a lot of work this year. It was, it was a busy year for our collection system, doing the storm system, the sanitary. We had a lot of sinkholes we had to deal with this year, and a lot of storm inlet failures, which we had to deal with. So there is an increase for each of those. Our general supplies for our laboratory, lab chemicals, we did see an increase because of the phosphorus, so we increased that accordingly. That may taper down as we get farther into this and get the plant dialed in exactly where we need it for the optimum phosphorus removal. Right now, we're still kind of learning the curves and, and basically trying to get the plant adjusted to where it's running under its ideal condition. One thing that I did pick up just this evening, for our lift station parts and supplies, I had that down as two thirty-six one hundred. That was not in the collection system last year. We had that as part of the plant maintenance, and talking to Baker Tilly and trying to get our things dialed into the right expense accounts, we moved that to the collection system. Since the lift stations technically are part of the collection system, we moved it from plant maintenance back to collections, and it'll stay there from this point on. The three hundred series, that's where we saw the major increases. Our sludge production for the phosphorus was a large part of that. It literally doubled from what we were accustomed to expending on our sludge and our chemicals for the sludge. So we did get that taken care of on the plus side. We did have lower electric rates this year, and a lot of that is, we think, because of the new turbo blowers that we put in, and we replaced the air piping, and that was all part of the phosphorus project. And I'll go over some of that once we get through these numbers and the charts in the The four hundred accounts, that's pretty much our capital improvements. When we go out and do these sewer lining jobs, like we did downtown around the square, or some of these projects where we're running in new lines in different areas, that all comes under the capital improvements. This year, we do have a project that's planned that'll go, it's a sewer lining project in an old brick sewer, that'll go from Connor, pretty much up towards Clinton, just actually the first alley north of Clinton. It'll go that far. I believe the bids were taken today, and the Board of Works are open. I've been on vacation this week, so I'm not sure what they look like yet, but-
They look good.
Pretty good, but-
Pretty good differential.
All right. But, yeah, that's a project we've been planning, and we're planning on starting on that this winter, and that'll probably go into the spring till we get that completed. We have some stormwater work we're wanting to knock out in the harbors, and then the rest of it's pretty much just equipment replacement at the plant as things wear out, and pumps, and screens, and so forth. The next page, if we get to the nine hundred funds, which is basically, that's our bond It was a slight decrease this year. We're just following basically the amortization tables that were given to us, and, and then, of course, they're working on doing the refinancing of the one, so that'll make a considerable difference for us. Getting into some of the charts, I hope these are in the right order. The annual plant electric cost. You can see what our average flows are, it's the blue line. I don't know if yours is in color, black and white, but the thin line is our flows, and that's our average flows per year. And then if you look at the electric costs that we've had over the years, you can see where we had a slight increase from sixteen to seventeen. We started putting in LED lights- We started putting in LED lighting. We started doing a bunch of things that we could to reduce the electric cost. And then we went to the turbo blowers and replaced the air piping system for our aeration tanks, and you can see the big jump where we've dropped down dramatically considering what the flows are. So the phosphorus project, doing that, the blowers and the air piping as part of that, it made a big difference, and we're hoping those savings will continue even more into the future as we get larger, because right now, we're only running one blower, and in the past, we had to run two to three blowers, so that's how much difference it makes. And we're talking like 300 horsepower motors, so that's a lot of current. The next chart, that's our total sludge processing cost. Seems like we did good making up for the electricity, but now we got other costs that are eating that up. Anyway, a lot of this is because of the phosphorus. I don't anticipate, we've spent this year $736,000 to date just keeping the sludge out of the system, getting the old sludge out of the system. There's a lot of changes we had to make around the plant to get the phosphorus operating at its peak removal. I expect this to drop and next year kind of bottom out and be more around $600,000 a year. But this is what the costs are, at least up to date for this year. But I think we'll get it dialed in, and it'll be a lot less next year. And the other project we've had is our long-term control plan, and this is where you can see a major difference as well. On the right, where it's got annual million gallons discharged, that 1,500 is actually $1.5 billion. The 2,000 is $2 billion. So that's our annual gallons that we discharge for the year. And then on the left, that's our million gallons that we discharge during the overflows of the CSOs, and then that same number correlates with inches of rain as well. So as you can see, back in '06 and '07, how the collection system, basically, the CSOs and how they discharged with the rains that we had. And as you get farther into the years ahead, you can see the CSO flows drop, and then when you look to '19, it's very minimal compared to the total gallons we brought through the treatment plant and then looking at the actual rainfall amount. So it's made a huge difference on what we've done in the long-term control plan. As you can see, the CSO discharges have dropped dramatically. 2010, I can't explain why that was down so far. It could have just been the way the rains fell, maybe more inches of rain, but lighter rains throughout the year. But we did have that drop in 210, but as you can see from the curve, it's made a major difference. And we have one more phase of the five phases to complete, and we're in design phase right now for Phase Five, the long-term control plan. So that's about everything I have to kind of let you know where we're at, what's been going on at the treatment plant, and our budget numbers for the coming year. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. President?
When you just mentioned about the cost of the sludge and how you anticipated going down, what you said we're getting a handle on it. Help me understand that. How are you going to get that to go down?
The plant, our plant was, every plant can be designed, you can have five 10 million gallon plants, but every plant has its own characteristics. We're like certain solids in certain tanks or certain detention times in certain tanks. And our plant, we totally had to change a lot of our thinking on how we used to run the plant to meet our permit. Well, a lot of that's changed just because removing the phosphorus has changed the solids that we normally kept in our aeration basin. Now we have to run it at a lot lower solids. Our final clarifiers, we have to run at a lot lower solid content, where we're moving more solids because part of the biopea in the phosphorus is getting that phosphorus to collect to the solids, which then you remove out of your system. So that's a lot of that cost there, is we're moving more solids out than what we used to. But the plants, kind of like when your body, when you change your eating habits and how it affects the different ways, the treatment plant's kind of the same way. We're affecting how we feed that plant and how the food's digested through the plant, and we're just trying to get it to where it balances out, where we don't have upset on one end and then the other side's too low or too much. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. O'Connor?
Be remiss, Ray, if I didn't ask you what you see as upcoming capital expenditures. It sounds like Phase Five is out there, although that may be, may be able to fund that with cash. Don't know. Haven't seen those numbers. But is there a, I guess in conjunction with that, are there any lift stations we're going to have to replace, be looking at?
Lift Station Two is a project that we have at this time. We're in design of that. That station pretty much pumps everything that is east of Cumberland Road and in 37 to the south, everything east. So on that east side of the city, all that goes through Lift Station Two.
And that is where?
On Allisonville Road there by Carbon. So anyway, that station is nearing its capacity. So what we're trying to do in this design is make sure that that station is designed to handle the ultimate flow we would get from that area. And we do have some restrictions in pipe size that we'll have to deal with. The station itself is not even large enough. The wet well's not large enough to even house the pumps that we're going to need. So we're looking at a total revamp of that location or maybe even potentially moving it to another location and just having sewer lines pass right through that area. So those are the things we're looking at in the design right now. But yes, that's in the future. We have a lift station on Little Chicago Road that we're looking at to get replaced here probably this coming year or the following year, but we're going to go into design on that as well this winter. We have our capital improvements as far as the storm. We're looking to spend probably $500,000 to $600,000 a year just on storm and probably $600,000, $700,000, $800,000 to close to a million as the years go on in our sanitary system as well. And most of that is out in the North Harbor, South Harbor area, where we have a lot of the old clay pipes. But, yeah, for the most part, the immediate ones we have coming up are Lift Station Two and our long-term control plan, Phase Five. No, it's not. I feel bad for other departments when I hear them talk about going to get a vehicle repaired, and we're buying an impeller for a pump that costs as much as their vehicle, so, you know.
Ray, long term, won't we be looking at another system in order to take care of the east side of 37 that'll run directly down to the plant versus using the lift station?
I, it's possible. A lot of that's still being looked at at this time. We had a master plan done of the area, and we had the whole sewer system done actually here a year or so ago with the master plan. But that is some of the things we're looking at. Do we need to get another line this way, or what would be the chances, depending on how much developed out to the east, would actually get here, or would we be better off doing something out more in that direction? So those are, you know, still a little bit kind of in the planning stages.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for keeping us up to date, and we appreciate all the work you do down there at the, at the plant.
Thank you. We couldn't be successful if it wasn't for you folks and the mayors and our accountants and everybody else, that there's a lot of people involved in everything we do. So if it wasn't for the help of everybody involved, we couldn't be where we're at, so...
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Transfer number one. Council consider transfer TA-19-19 appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign budget, budget funds for city, court, and the Office of Finance and Accounting. Mr. Spalding? I'm sorry. Mr. Beres?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. So this transfer resolution deals with the general fund. It's pretty straightforward. We have a couple instances where we have departments wanting to use existing appropriation authority to spend funds on something different. So in one case, the court would like to use money that was originally appropriated for services and other charges to purchase $2,500 worth of office furniture and supplies. The other instance is our office, Finance and Accounting, is asking to use $16,000 that was originally appropriated for personal services to buy new cubicles for the redesign of our office layout. So as I said, pretty standard appropriations between series within a single department. So with that, if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Questions?
President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd make a motion that we approve TA-19-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-19-19. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Council consider transfer TA-20-19 in appropriation transfer in the Downtown Development Fund for the Street Department to purchase new lights and potting soil for downtown. Mr. Beres?
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. This is the transfer resolution I referenced earlier this evening related to the Downtown Development Fund. As I said then, this is a series of transfers to align appropriation authority with spending out of the fund. Now, to clarify, in each of these instances where we need to transfer money around, there was a decision by the Downtown District Committee that granted, told a department to go ahead and spend money on something. However, because our office never brought a fiscal action forward, no money was officially appropriated for that expense that was approved by the Downtown District Committee. So that's one set of cases. Then there's another set of instances where money was appropriated by the council for something. However, for a variety of reasons, either the full amount of that money or that money in its entirety is not going to end up being spent before the end of 2019. So what this transfer resolution does is take that unused appropriation authority and move it over to a place where it needs to be so that we're aligned in terms of actual appropriations and spending. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I'll just make a comment that as a member of the Downtown District Committee, they, we've, the committee has made recommendations to the council for expenditures over $25,000. So these are all expenditures that this council has seen. It's just that the money wasn't really spent and/or appropriated in the different departments, so this is not additional money.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'll make a motion to approve TA-20-19.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-20-19. This will be a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries nine zero. Council comments. Mr. Jensen?
Mr. President, this past week, Noblesville lost an individual, Larry Stork, who serves on our Board of Works, who has served our city for over 40 years. And I know, I knew him as well as most of us did, and I just, I think it's appropriate that, if you will allow it, that we rise and observe a moment of silence in his honor and thank him for his service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I have one. We are in a short two-week span, and we will be meeting again a week from tonight for our council meeting, and it'll be our first meeting in December, and then our second meeting will be on the 17th of December. So we won't be meeting in between the Christmas and New Year's holiday.
Mr. President, I was just going to make a comment that we've got some exciting things happening this weekend in the City of Noblesville with the tree lighting ceremony that'll happen Friday night after the reading of Twisted Light Before Christmas. And then we've got the Noblesville Christmas Parade on Sunday, so, and then next week, there's a lot of activities on our first Friday night that will be a great celebration of this wonderful community. Thank you very much. It's turkey try on Thursday morning.
Always something going on in Noblesville. Any other council comments? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, adjourn.
Aye.
We're adjourned.